The median in the audience, if anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please ask any school committee meeting member at the end of the meeting. Welcome, everybody. We're in a full house tonight. So the first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to approve the minutes? And if so, can I have a motion to approve? Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor. unanimous. Um, we're gonna change the agenda a little bit. We're gonna bring the teachers forward and recognize them for their many years of service, and the central office staff, I'm sorry, as well, for their many years of service. Do a couple of you wanna come up to the table and... Thank you so much. I thought maybe just tell us about your, uh, your experience.
My name is Jean Prickett, and I've been an inclusion pre-K teacher at Shining Star. Um, I started actually, for the first five years, as a teaching assistant. I still had two boys at home that actually went through Milford Public Schools, very happy with everything there. And, um, then I decided I really would like to go back and get my certification in early childhood, get my master's, so I've been actually teaching for twenty years. So it's a total of twenty-five years with Milford Public Schools. It's been a great experience. Shining Star has an awesome team. I've been very blessed to work with, um, a great group of people, and I've really learned a lot. And I look forward to continuing helping children with, um, special needs in the community through volunteering that I do. And also, I'll probably be back subbing, I'm sure, so... Anyway, thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us. Um, I also have been at Shining Star, been there for twenty-five years. Um, I was there before we had a name. We were just the preschool, so we were there when it became Shining Star. And I also have been very proud of the fact that we are parents' first introduction to the Milford School System. And I think all of us take that very seriously down there. They're coming in with lots of things, and to be there for them, to support them and their children, in many ways, has been very important to me. And it's probably one of the things I will miss. I'm, I'm happy to be retiring to do other things, but there definitely are, are parts of it that I will miss, and, um, thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Before I allow the members to, to, to ask some questions, I just wanna read the names and the lengths, the years of service, just so you'll know. So Carol Liberto in the office, administrative assistant, twenty-five years. Donna Pertrell, twenty-five years. Jessica Lamarby, excuse me if I messed that up, twenty-three years. Jean Prickett, twenty years. And Pam Larkin, seventeen years of service to the Milford Public Schools, so just so you'll know. Any member? Scott?
So congratulations to all of you. I, uh, there's an awful lot of familiar faces to me in the room, which is, uh, a little surreal to me. I, I wish you absolutely nothing but the best, and, and...
Thank you.
The contributions you've made to the, to the students and to the faculty and this, and to all that we've done, that we have going on in the town of Milford is, is immeasurable. And, you know, just wanna, as a committee member, um, as a friend of some of your children, um, you know, I've known, I've known many of you my entire life, so I certainly wish you nothing but the best. And, uh, I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done, and, and you'll be missed. That you've, that your, the folks that will be coming in, and I won't call them replacements, but those that will be coming in to, um, to take over those positions have some very large shoes to fill, and, and, uh, we'll certainly give them everything we can and try and support them, but we wish you nothing but the best. They've, they've got, uh, they've got a taller order to fill, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, that was very kind.
Enjoy the next phase.
Okay.
Any other member?
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
I think the thing that amazes me the most, every year when we bring the retiring teachers back, is, and the administrators again, I'm sorry about that, is the years of service that people give to the Milford Public Schools. It's a true testament to how much you truly do care, you're dedicated, and you love your jobs. I have some letters I'd like to give to you, if you don't mind. I'll come down the end of the table. Sure as long as I have glasses printed. Thank you so much.
Lamar.
I'll go this way, Donna?
I have an easy one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for everything. Mrs. Larkin? Thank you for everything, thank you. Mrs. Liberato? Thank you. Thank you for everything. All right, thank you. I think I can hear you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you again very, very much for your years of service. Thank you. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody have any announcements, correspondence, and distributions?
Mr. Chairman, for me?
Yes.
Um, just want to, uh, really recognize a, a, a couple of different te, a couple of different, uh, things that have gone on. Um, one, the Memorial Day programs that each school put on, um, and the phenomenal job that each of the students and the faculty did, um, just in commemorating that, that, that holiday, as well as I had an opportunity to attend some of the, some of the spring concerts that were been going on, and, um, you know, just continue to be impressed by the musician, by the musicians and, and, uh, the work that the students and the teachers put in together. Um, and then certainly lastly, just congratulations to the class of 2016. I can't believe, we actually haven't had a meeting since graduation, but, uh, this is our first one, so, um, congratulations to the class of 2016. They, they've certainly had a, had an unbelievable, uh, experience here and really, um, conducted themselves with, uh, great professionalism, and, and really, they should be very proud of themselves as, as the administration, I know they are as well. So, that's, that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Any other member?
I didn't.
Oh, see?
I just wanted to commend Woodland on orchestrating their second Field Day. I think it's the second one you had off-campus, um, getting students over to the high school turf field, and thank you to the high school for welcoming them. Also, there was a call out the day before Field Day to families to provide additional water for the students, and, um, Hannaford Supermarket came through with a hundred gallons of water, um, to donate for Field Day. So, um, that was a really generous, um, way of supporting our community and our schools by Hannaford, so we thank them for that. And also Katie Parker and Lance Peters, who helped to facilitate that. So, thank you to Hannaford and to Woodland for making that a great day for our students. I also wanted to note the event that happened at Shining Star Preschool recently. I don't know if, were you gonna add that in any of your things later?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. But a number of committee members and...
Don't steal his number.
I know, right?
No.
I know Mike has a special spot for Shining Star. Um, but the, I think Shining Star did an extraordinary job of commemorating and honoring two members of their community, um, Lilian Haley and Alexandra Humeston. Um, there, there was nice, um, speaking parts that were delivered, the high school, um, chorus was there, and there were a couple of swings dedicated in the favorite colors of those who were being honored that day. And Lucy and the whole Shining Star team did a great job, um, very, very nice, and it was really well-attended. And the other thing I noticed, the preschoolers who were there were so beautifully behaved. They were quiet the whole time, they had a couple of speaking parts, and it was just a really nice way to, to honor, um, a couple of important members. You're welcome.
Any other members? I would just like to comment, I had a conversation with Carrie earlier about graduation. I just wanna say that this year's graduation was so professional. I'm not saying that the others haven't been, but as I mentioned earlier, it was, I think it's my eighth graduation. No beach balls, no blow-up sharks, no blow-up mannequins, um, you know? Everybody was very attentive, you know, looking forward, and, you know, we were in the front this, you know, this year, so we were looking at the students, you know, very, very professional, very well-behaved, so, you know, it's, uh, it's a testament to you and your leadership team. Great job, so, thank you.
And it was only eight thousand degrees.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
We also had a nice tribute to Jane Ryan, Memorial, I think about playgrounds, the dedication, and Memorial School, we had a nice tribute there.
Yeah, that was very nice.
Uh, Tom Delfanti donated a granite bench with an inscription, uh, for Jane in, in her honor and memory of her family, and their family was there present. So that was the new playground dedication at Memorial School. So we've had a lot of, it's been a very active June in the last few weeks.
Yeah, a lot going on. Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Anybody here, invitation to speak? This is where I thought if the, as everybody knows, tonight is, uh, Bob's last school committee meeting, and I thought if anybody wanted to say some kind words or wish him well, this would be the time that we could do it.
Only kind words, please.
It's a different meeting for that.
Well, I have a letter here that I have to accept, it was a resignation, so, um, you know, what I would like to say is, um, two things that'll always stay in the forefront of my mind is, when I was lucky enough to get elected seven years ago, the first phone call I received congratulating me and wishing the best was from Bob Tremblay. And then after that, I received mem, calls from other members. But the first call I received, uh, as a Green member, you know, not knowing what direction to go on, was the superintendent of schools telling me that anything that he could do for me, he would always be there, and he has. And I was thinking about it today, and I was talking about, thinking to myself about character. And I think he's such a great man of character. I was on the committee the year that Bob got the famous C grade. And I said to myself today, I said, "Most people either A would've left or buried their head in the sand." Bob didn't do that. Bob took our advice, and we're not educators, but he took our advice anyway, and he went to work in the following year, and every year since then, has scored an A+. That's a man of great character, that he was able to take criticism or take, take a review and say, "I've gotta do something with this, and I'm gonna prove that I can do it." And he did it. He did a great job, and I'm very, very proud of you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right? You will be missed, but you won't be forgotten.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Scott?
Um, so, you know, Bob, I would just say, um, you know, this is your last meeting. As I was sort of joking with you, you're still here. Um, but, uh, you know, certainly wish you nothing but the best. You know, we've, uh, I've really had the pleasure of working with you as a school committee member for now the last, if you're at seven, that puts me at five. So, um, for the last, uh, four or five years here, um, but really as a, as a, as a friend and as a parent and as a committee member for, for far longer than that. So, um, you'll definitely be missed. Um, I'll tell ya, you know, obviously we knew you were leaving, and, and we knew you were heading off to that. I'll be honest with you, when, when your letter of resignation came through in my email, I was at work when I opened it up, uh, much to my boss's dismay, and I looked at it, and I'll tell you what, it, it still kinda took my breath away, I gotta be honest. It still kinda, it was a little bit of a stab to the heart. It's, um, it was a lot like receiving a letter of resignation from one of my employees at work that we care so much about. They've become almost like our children. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I would say this is, it kinda felt the same way, even though we knew you were leaving. Getting that letter was, I'll be honest, was a little, it was a little bit of a stab. So, um, I know where you're going, um, I know what an amazing job you have done here, and, and what a great job you're gonna do there. And, uh, as I've already, as you've already found out, you're not rid of me, 'cause I do their career, Career Day every two years, so, um, I'm, I get the privilege of continuing to see Bob in, in his environment, and you're going to just a great school district. He may be canceling Career Day now, but, uh, but I certainly wish you nothing but the best. And, and like you, Mike, um, my, one of my first phone calls after having the privilege of being elected the first time, uh, was also from Superintendent Tremblay. Um, I think you've done an amazing job. I tell you, I told you when I had the privilege of being chair for the year, um, I, I give you a lot of credit for what you do. I told Kevin when he was coming in, I said, "I think you should all have your head checks for wanting to do this job," but it's such a critical job. It's never easy to have seven bosses, especially ones that change and whose full-time job is not being your boss. Having a performance evaluation on television, I, I don't know how you do it, but you do, and you handle it with professionalism and grace every single time. And you've continued to dig in and, and serve the people in the town, the community of, and the students of Milford. So, um, as a, as a friend, as a community member, as a parent, and as a school committee member, thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, good. Thank you very much. Any other member?
There you go, you can go ahead.
Jim?
Mine's just gonna be quick. Um, the, two things. One, my, my ma, my main regret is that I didn't do this earlier. I didn't have a long enough time to work with you, which I know I, I, you know, I'm truly kicking myself about, but what I really wanted to say thank you for is, as a parent, uh, and what you've done for Milford Schools, having two boys in the district whom I, I know you know pretty well. Um, I, I just wanna say that from the time that you first, uh, stepped into the role till now, um, you've done nothing but develop this district. You know, and you can see and feel your presence throughout, um, the entire school district. And I don't have anything grand to say, other than just thank you, uh, from the bottom of my heart. I'll miss you for sure, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Jim. Joey?
I just want to second that. I, yeah, I wanna thank you as well. Uh, and, you know, a lot of it, a lot, a lot's already been said, but, um, you know, you've really helped move this district forward, um, during your, your time as superintendent. And, um, I've been so impressed with, with your, your work ethic, the positive energy that you bring. Um, you're always available for, for anyone, whether it's, it's us calling you at ten, eleven o'clock at night, or some parent, or a teacher, or, or a student. Um, one thing I've, I've been very, very impressed with you over the years is your, your, you, how approachable you are, and the hours that you put in, the commitment, the dedication that you've, that you've made to the role, it's, it's been really impressive. And, um, the other thing that's really impressed me is your ability to, to create a, a team around you. Um, and you, you've built a really strong team, and fortunately, a lot of those people have been able to move up into, um, different roles now that you're leaving, and, uh, because of that, um, you know, we're not gonna miss a beat. Um, we're gonna be able to continue to move forward and continue down the, the path that, that you've laid for us. So thank you for, for your dedication, and, uh, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks, Jim. Any other member? Jen?
I also just wanted to say thank you. Um, I think all the great words have already been taken, but, um, I do remember, um, one of my first interactions with you was when you were presenting, um, my daughter's class was the first class of free full-day kindergarten.
Oh, yeah.
And I remember sitting in an auditorium where almost everybody was really thrilled, but there were a couple of people who were not thrilled, and, um, you handled yourself so nicely, and it, it kind of is in character with the way you always handle yourself. And your response to the people who had some doubts about it was, "I'll talk to you at the end, and I'll spend all night with you here if we have to, but I'll make sure your questions are answered and you have the information you need moving forward to feel comfortable with this." And I think that's how you've approached everything. You are always, as Joe said, so approachable, and you always make it look easy. I don't know how you make your job look easy, but you do, and, you know, you, you see people in these roles, and they're quick with an answer, or quick to give you some feedback and run away, um, but you're not like that. You just, you always, you make the person you're talking to feel like your, your priority or your issue is the most important at the time, and, um, God knows what you're really thinking at the time, but I can only imagine, um, but it's...
If you're gonna talk next, we may find out.
Yeah, right? Um, and I think, you know, in, in every field, but I only know the field of education, we always wanna know, have we left a legacy? And have we left something really good behind? And you absolutely have left a legacy in the Milford Public Schools that has improved, um, the district and improved the experience for all of our students and educators, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
John?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I'm still waiting for my phone call, so, do you have a couple of weeks left?
Which one? Which one? What's the topic?
But, no, I can't, I really can't add to any of this praise, um, but I would like to reiterate it and support it, and wish you the best of luck, um, with your, the next phase of your career at Weston, although I know it's not luck, uh, it's due to the dedication, the hard work, all of your achievements, so I'd just like to say thank you for all your time here in the Milford District.
Thanks, Jen, I'll keep your call tomorrow.
Okay.
Joe? So, I didn't get that call the other day. I've got nothing to say.
All these calls?
No, I, I, you know, people live here their whole lives and, and have tried to make a mark in this town. You don't even live in this town, you're well-known throughout everywhere. You've left such a great mark in this town, you've made so many kids happy, you've brightened everyone's lives, and, and everything that you do, just, you have a glow. Anywhere you go, people just, "Oh, talk to Bob Tremblay, let's talk to Bob, Bob's a great guy to talk to." That's gonna be missed.
Kevin, Kevin doesn't have that, so...
We love you, Kevin. We may have the light to on fire to turn you to glow, but...
I feel you, Kevin. I'm wrong. The three years that I've been on this committee, Bob, it's, you, you've made me look at schools a different way. I've, I've been on this committee 'cause I wanted to help out the town, help out my children and everyone else's kids, but you've made me think differently on how everything works, and I thank you for that. Thank you very much. You've done a great job, and everyone should be proud for what you've accomplished in this town.
Thanks, Joe. So, real quick, I just wanna share a short, funny story that Bob and I have shared. So, at the dealership last week, there's a young lady in the waiting room, and just being polite, I went in and said hello to her, and I said, "Where do you, do you live around here?" And she says, "No, I live in Weston." She says, "Where do you live?" I said, "I live in Milford." I said, "And you're stealing my superintendent." And she goes, "Do you know him?" And I said, "Well, kind of." She goes, "Well, how do you know him?" And I said, "Well, I serve on the school committee." "Oh." She says, "What's he like?" I said, "Well, if I answer this question a certain way, will you throw him out?"
Mike, I'll be honest with you, I tried, I went to Career Day this year, it was, he hadn't even signed his contract yet, and they still talk.
So I said to her, I said, uh, very simply, I said, "Your, your gain is our loss." And I went on to explain to her some of the things that, uh, Bob and I've been at, the events we've been at, and I've seen him interact with children, I've seen him interact with the finance committee. So she said to me, "Well, can I have your business card, and will you write his name on the back of it?" I said, "Of course I will." So I wrote on the back of my card, "Dr. Robert Tremblay," and then I put "Bob." And she picks up my card, and she goes, "Dr. Robert Tremblay." I said, "Well, the first bit of advice I wanna give ya, you oughta better call him Bob." And I said, "But he's very approachable." I said, "You know, he's, he's young, he's got a great vision." I said, "That your town of Weston will be very excited to have him." And the last thing she said to me was, "I can't wait to go home and tell all my girlfriends." What a small world. So, anyway, Robert, great job.
Thank you. If I can, just a couple of comments, I won't, uh, belabor the meeting tonight. I appreciate everyone's kind words, I'm kinda speechless, it's, um, it's always that, you know, I've been at a number of these meetings, they've been nine years, I've seen people come and go, and, and there's always that going-away speech that you listen to, and I've never been on the receiving end of that before, and, and you'll all be there at some point and experience that, and it's very humbling. But I've learned so much from Milford. Milford has been my family. Uh, you know, even though I don't live in the community, as Jim mentioned, I, I've had a chance to, um, and I've worked with all of you in some capacity, and, and I consider all of you to be friends, and, uh, and I really do, and I, and I've learned from all of you, and you bring this, uh, one of the challenges of the role of superintendent is, um, to have seven bosses who, who don't necessarily work in your field, and there's times where I gravitate more, you know, where Jen kind of appreciates and understands sort of the public, administer, public school world, uh, that you bring, you know, John and, and people before you understand sort of municipal government and what it's like to live a day in the life of, of, in the public eye. And there's just certain parts of the job, but at the same time, I've learned so much from the business-mindedness of other people on the committee who approach this, saying, "Hey, you know, in the real world, when you do contract negotiations, it doesn't look like this." And, and so, uh, you take all that in, and it makes you just a, um, a stronger leader by having the varied perspectives. So as much as it can be having seven bosses that change every year, um, who don't necessarily work in education, the enriching experience for superintendent is that you get this variety of people who bring multiple perspectives that enrich your ability to look through different lenses. And that's been a real learning experience for me. I, I look at, you know, the students who are here, and, you know, one of the, if I look back to regrets, you know, there was regrets, I've had a few, the one thing that I feel like, you know, I've, I've, I've always taken, um, pride in being impeccable with my word. It comes from a, a writer, um, Luis Garcia, uh, and, and it's the Four Agreements, and one of the agreements is being impeccable with your word. And I gave my word that night, saying I was planning to see, my, my goal was to see the first tuition-free full-day kindergarten class graduate. And I fell a bit short of that, uh, by a few years, and I feel, uh, there's some regrets, I really wanted to do that and see it through, but things happen, uh, at certain times for certain reasons. Uh, you know, having submitted seven, seven statements of interest on the Woodland School before actually having it come to realization, which is now, you know, uh, July twenty-sixth scheduled, uh, you know, handover of the keys, uh, to see that, you know, come just, you know, after I leave, but still sort of on the clock, uh, the tuition-free full-day kindergarten, the realization of the Family Resource Center. Um, but more than all of that is the relationships with the staff, the retirees who are here tonight, and just the students, and having those connections. It's been a privilege, it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor to serve the town of Milford. I will miss the community. Uh, we are looking at a full, a full-scale relocation, uh, for my family, uh, it may not be known, my, so my, uh, my wife will be moving to work in Medfield after working in, uh, for a long time at Nipmuck, at, at, and then Upton Schools. Um, so that's a big change for us as a family, and my children will all go to, now will all go to Weston Schools. Uh, so we're really relocating from the whole area, so for me, it's, it's, there's so many emotions around not just leaving this job here, but really, there'll come a time where I won't even be passing through Milford, and it's gonna be a tremendous loss for me, because I've come to call this, this community my home. And I wanna thank you all for, for making it that feel like home, and, uh, I really do appreciate the support over the years. I also wanna acknowledge, if you were missed if I didn't, 'cause Jose Costa was kind enough to come tonight by somebody's invitation. And, uh, Jose and I never had the opportunity, uh, to serve together, um, but Jose was one of the initial votes back nine years ago to appoint me as superintendent of schools, and I wanna just publicly say thank you for giving a young kid a chance to take the lead of a great school district that I know will continue to grow from here. Uh, had it not been for you and, and, and your colleagues who supported that vote, uh, we certainly wouldn't be here tonight. So I wanna thank you publicly for that, and giving a chance to, to a Green, then-Green school administrator who's learned a lot along the way. Thanks, Jose. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and to the members of the school committee for your kind words.
Next agenda item is the summer feeding program. Welcome.
This is, uh, shall we start?
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Father, I'm Mac Murray. I'm the rector of Trinity Church, and, uh, started about two and a half years ago, uh, formed something called the Milford Area Humanitarian Coalition. And we got together with members of the community, the faith, the churches, the, uh, police, the fire department, the politicians, the businesses, and, uh, sent out a letter and said we were gonna have a summit. And, um, we had about fifty or sixty folks show up, and they brought within the lists of things that were on most, highest on their list of concerns for the community as a whole, and how we can serve, better serve the underserved. Out of that list, we broke it down into, narrowed it down to four categories that we really have been focusing on for these last couple of years. Uh, the, the, the two primary ones, uh, the four were elder, elder care, and that came out of the police talking to us about how they were knocking down at least two or three doors a week, uh, for people who were, uh, doing wellness checks. And they're, we're still trying to find a way, by the way, to, to be able to identify the seniors and elders that have fallen off the grid, opposite end of the school system, But it's the, there are folks that don't respond to the census questionnaires, and they're not on the senior centers roles, and they're just basically under the radar. So that's one of the issues. A second was a resource guide to allow people to know where to go if they needed help. And the resource guide that we put together with the help of our congressman and our senator is actually the one that's on the website now for the town. If you click on their resource list, it brings up the resource guide that we wrote. The third was transportation. And as I think all of you know, starting next month, we'll have a fixed route bus system in Milford. And that really came out of that, the push from the group. And then the fourth is food security. And how do we make sure that everyone has the food that they need to be able to successfully negotiate their lives? Meaning healthy food, appropriate food, at the right time in the right place. And that then developed into a number of programs that exist now throughout the town. Started with Unitarian Church on Pine Street, who were providing for the last twenty-some-odd years dinner every Sunday night. We've then expanded that to now where we have seventeen meals that are offered throughout the month, every Thursday, every Friday, every Sunday, and then a number of other times throughout the month, on last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the second Tuesday. So there's seventeen different meals. About a year and a quarter ago, back in April of last year, March of last year, we said, "Well, one of the areas we have not addressed, and we need to, is the kids that are in the school system who are on reduced and free lunch program, and who are looking at the summertime as being a time when they don't get the opportunity to have a nutritious meal." And so we said in March, "How are we going to make that happen for this summer?" And we said, "Well, that's a big order." But we went off and went to the community, went to the banks, went to private citizens and elsewhere, and raised about $20,000. We went to Carla Tuttle, a saint. And Saint Carla said yes, that she could contract with us to provide meals for the kids that we were going to provide meals for last summer. So we ran a pilot program. We funded it completely through donations, and Carla prepared the meals and delivered them. We delivered meals to the shelter families that live, we have about, you probably know, I'm sure you do, that there's about thirty-five shelter families, shelters, scattered site shelters that are run by SMOCK in Milford. And so we delivered meals to the shelter families, to the kids that were engaged in the youth center summer program, to the kids in the ELL program at Brookside, and to the kids in the special needs program. So they all got lunch throughout the summer. That was about 2,200 meals. Next step, we said, and the good news is that the, we started looking at the USDA's Summer Food Service Program a year ago, and decided we didn't want to do all the paperwork at that point. We would go ahead and fund it completely with funds that we raised ourselves. The YMCA, Hakamak Y, came to the table to us about six months ago and said, "Oh, by the way, Trinity Church, which is on the corner of Congress and Exchange, is right smack in the middle of a little butterfly of census tracts in Milford that are of the lowest possible income." In their, the picture, they're red. And the red zones include Trinity and going up West Street, and then over to Spruce and Walnut, and includes Memorial, and includes the youth center. And so the Y came to the table and said, "We are willing to be your partners in this endeavor, and we will be the sponsors, meaning we'll complete the paperwork, we'll hire somebody to manage the program and take care of all the paperwork." And so we said yes. And so our plan this summer, my plan, I think the Y is still thinking, and Carla's still thinking maybe a little bit less, but I'm thinking we're going to feed something on the order of 20,000 meals this summer. Something on the order of 500 a day. We'll have three sites. And remember, how many kids are there that are forty, is it forty-four percent?
Forty-four percent, so about eighteen hundred kids.
Eighteen hundred kids in the Milford school system are on reduced or free lunch program. And last year, some of the kids that we fed on Friday came on Monday for their next meal. They had not eaten on Saturday or Sunday.
Thank you, Father Mac. Great. So I'm Mary T. Bergen from the Hakamak Area YMCA. And as Father Mac said, we came on board about six months ago. And our senior director for my team, the Health Innovation Team, Kimberly Cohen, right behind me here, works very closely on the Milford Wellness Committee, and has been involved in this community for many years. And the issue of food insecurity and access to healthy food is so important to our YMCA. So when we saw the great work that the Milford Area Humanitarian Coalition was doing, we couldn't wait to get involved. And this summer, as Father Mac said, we are becoming the official sponsor with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the USDA. And the great news about that is that all of the meals served to kids at the three sites we've selected, the Memorial Elementary School, the Milford Youth Center, and the Trinity Church, will be completely reimbursed because of where they're located in the census tract data. So free meals for kids eighteen and under this summer. Open sites means that any kid, regardless of income, eligibility, need, any kid can walk into those sites during the times we've selected, so 11:30 to 1:00 every weekday, and receive a meal, no questions asked. And we're providing fun and educational programming every day to entice kids to come, because we want them to have a great summer, too. So our YMCA, for example, has a Director of STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, which I'm sure is very familiar to this group. So that team will be coming out a few days a week to do some programming with the kids. And we have the Massachusetts Safe Roots to School Organization coming out to talk about walking and biking safety. So we're really excited about the programming end of things as well. And we'll also be providing meals to all the students again this year in the Brookside Summer Success Program. And before we close, would just like to really acknowledge the support from those in this room, Dr. Tremblay and Dr. McIntyre, especially for your first year coming in. You couldn't have said yes any faster, and we just appreciate that so much for the support. And Carla Tuttle, as Father Mac said, just amazing partner. We can't think of a better person to have running the food side of things for us and delivering the meals with her team. So thank you so much for the opportunity to share this with you, and we're so excited to get started. And just about a week, we start on June 23rd and run all summer through August 30th.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And again, all three sites, a reminder, and it's just every, you know, a question came up. We had a volunteer coordination meeting, training meeting on Tuesday. We had over a hundred volunteers show up. Hundred people packed the church to hear how they can help out this summer. And so, and we have many more that are coming in addition to that, but the community is responding as well. But that, one of the questions was, you know, "Do the kids have to come from just Milford?" "No, they can come from Texas, or Hawaii, or wherever they come from." Any child, any child that walks through the door. In addition to that, all the volunteers will be fed, as well as the adults that bring the children. So everyone gets a meal when they walk through the door. So, thank you very much for your interest.
Yeah. Thank you for your support from the YMCA perspective, Father Mac. Good to see you. The, thank you for putting this together. And, you know, just again, another great support for the children and the people in the town of Milford, coming from two great organizations. And I'm a little partial to Trinity Church. Full disclosure, it's the church I grew up to. Father Mac is my pastor, so. But it's good to see you here. I'm very excited to see this program going forward. I know the work that you've been doing over many years for the rest of the community, it's great to see it's now reaching into some of our free and reduced lunch students, and having even a far greater reach, so. And not surprised that Carla is amazing. So we're certainly very fortunate to have her. I'm glad she's doing such a great job and supporting you guys as well. Good luck, and we look forward to hearing how it went.
Thank you. And we of course invite any of you to join us this summer if you'd like to see the program in action as well.
And there are lots of opportunities. If you just want to come and talk to the kids, have a meal with them, you know. That's any day between 11:30 and 1:00 at any of those three sites.
Well, the other thing I was going to say is if you have some use for the, of course, the newly renovated youth center for some of the programs, please reach out to me. Because I serve on the board there as well.
Oh, wonderful. That's great.
And there's a lot of room in that building now, and I don't know if you've been upstairs, but the upstairs is already done with, you know, many different types of rooms that could be used. And then you've got the full gymnasium.
And Jen has been actively involved with us and, from the get-go on this. And so she is, you know, she's very involved.
It's a fantastic program. It's obviously needing a need in the community. You mentioned the high percentage of low-income students within the district. What are you doing to market the program and get that messaging out there?
Good question.
This Saturday, and you're all invited. At nine o'clock, we will depart from Trinity with door hangers and flyers, and we will visit every house within one mile of Trinity and the youth center and Memorial. And leave information. We have little stickers that we handed out, little magnets, refrigerator magnets we handed out at Milford Day, celebrate Milford Day, that has all three sites and the times. We're putting public service announcements on the television and in the radio station.
Yeah, we appeared with Dr. McIntyre on Milford TV just two days ago. We recorded that announcement, so that's wonderful, and...
Which is must-watch, don't they?
And you can check, you can get it on YouTube.
We've all done our tour. We understand.
So our goal is to provide as, you know, as broad a spread of the information as possible. So any ideas, we're absolutely open to as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Anything we can do to help, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next agenda item is the Milford High School presentation. Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, we want to thank Dr. Tremblay's, throughout my entire time in Milford Public Schools, he was always the superintendent. Appreciate everything. We are talking about our success in college. A lot of it's due to stuff you've enacted, and we appreciate everything you've done for when we were in the school system, so, thank you.
No, thank you very much, yeah.
I just want to say thank you, because I don't know if you remember this, but at lunch, one time, at Memorial, I was struggling to tie my shoes, and you helped me tie my shoes, and you taught me how to do it, which was a really big obstacle for a six-year-old me, so thank you.
I don't remember that. I'm so glad I did. I'm going to work on Dr. McIntyre.
You know, being a student at Memorial, and you as the principal definitely was kind of the beginning of my education here in Milford, and seeing, coming back, seeing you leaving is, made me feel old and it's kind of surreal, so I just want to thank you very much.
Yeah, me too. On all counts. I think I'm never going to forget your face in the end of the lip dub video last year. You know, at the end, and you're making the, it was just, it blazes into my brain forever. It's a whole bar of memory that I'll carry with the rest of my life.
Good to know.
You all have great families, and you've been great, great students, and I'm sure you're going to tell us and make us so proud tonight, too. So thanks for your kind words and for making Milford so proud.
So please, go ahead. Let's hear about your first year.
Well, so I'm a first-year student, now about to be second-year student at Providence College. I'm a political science student, and I'm on the pre-law track at the moment. First year, it's really an emotional roller coaster for anybody. But it really was, I think, a lot of the lessons I learned at Milford High School that ended up making it so successful. A lot of it really dawned on the AP program we have here, I think. And the fact that I was able to take so many AP classes. I took six AP classes in high school, and I wish I took more. And for any student looking, you know, maybe thinking about doing it, take it. If even, I didn't get all credit for all my classes, trust me, I didn't. And, um, I didn't, and that's not a big deal. Because those class, the most beneficial class I think I ever took in high school was AP Calculus, and that's the worst class I ever performed in in high school. But learning in a more difficult class where, you know, I was used to always doing really well, a class that I struggled to do okay in, really taught me about when it, once I got into college, and classes aren't so easy, and I really had to put my nose to the grindstone. That was a really beneficial lesson I learned, not just academically, but through the experience of taking an AP class.
So I'm a rising sophomore at UMass Amherst, and I'm in the Eisenberg School of Business, currently undeclared. And I think just, I was definitely very academically prepared for college. Like, every other part was a little bit harder. I mean, being in a completely new environment with people you didn't know is definitely a huge transition. But academically, I think Milford really did an awesome job of preparing us. I agree with David, the AP program was awesome. I like went into high, college with twenty-nine college credits. I was already considered a sophomore, and it really helped because I got better pick of classes, and I just like had so much more experience under my belt. So I definitely think that like AP should be a huge push, and I wish I took more, actually. I agree, yeah.
Nolan Hobart, I'm a, again, going to be a second year at Northeastern University, mechanical engineering student. The first three weeks were a huge adjustment. I've said this multiple, multiple times. It was a slap in the face to what college was really going to be. I went in thinking, you know, it's going to be great, I'm going to slide right into a group of friends, we're going to be buddy-buddy, just like that, just like high school. And I quickly realized that that is not the case. First day of classes, I remember coming after Calculus III, which was the hardest class I've taken to date, and crying to my mother that I didn't want to take it anymore. And, you know, you kind of got to persevere, stick through it, to anyone being, you know, the first year in college that's coming here. Like David said, put your nose to the grindstone, and it really does pay off. You know, after the first three weeks settle down, the kind of initial emotional roller coaster dies down. You know, you start excelling in classes. Calc III became one of my favorite classes easily, and I think that's really due to the higher level classes that we have access to here. You know, I was able to take Calculus AB junior year, BC senior year, Calc I and II, you know, twice, which not many students get to do. Usually it's all one elongated class. But the upper-level classes, I don't know, next year, they're talking about doing an upper-level college course here, which I think will be great, and I just can't, you know, say enough about. You know, the program we have here, the classes, we're able to take, you know, AP classes that they both said. And they're, whether or not you get credit or not are hugely beneficial to your development as a person and your growth in college, I think.
Open it up to the members.
If I may. So, thank you guys for coming back, guys and gals, for coming back. It's always good to see, you know, recent graduates coming back and kind of sharing their experiences and talking about how the high school helped prepare them, and what it sounds like from all three of you, just that your opening comments even before we get into the presentation, that it was actually much more than just the high school. It was really your full academic career here through the school system. And, you know, the AP courses is certainly a big piece. I guess one of my questions would be is, is now that you've sort of seen the other side, and all three of you have gone and had a successful start to your career in college, you all mentioned AP. Is there a place where you feel that we could, should be looking to expand further in that AP program? Given that all three of you said the same thing, which is, hey, take as many as you can. In fact, I wish there was even more we could take. Is there a specific area that each of you guys would recommend that we start to think about that?
Well, we all kind of agreed that the more specific we can get, the better. And I know, like, a lot of my friends at school are business majors, and a lot of them took micro or macroeconomic AP classes in high school. And I don't know how the course of study has changed since I've left. I mean, it's only been one year. But any introduction to like, any upper-level business courses? Because that's not something you can prepare for in a traditional classroom. That's an interdisciplinary thing where it involves English skills, history skills, math skills, all in one. So, I mean, Jing Jing, you're a business student, so maybe you could speak...
Yeah, I took microeconomics my first semester of college, and going in, I was like, oh, it'll probably just be like a math class. I'll just do what I did in high school, but it was just like so different from everything I've ever taken. There's like a little psych thrown in there, some like history, a little math, like some stats. So it's definitely something that like I wish I got introduced to in like high school. And I know there is an economics class, but it's like an elective. So I think it'd be really great if like you made it like a full-on class or offered it as like an AP with a teacher.
Yeah, I think kind of expanding, kind of to see what the kid wants to do. So what, so as I said before, there's Calc I and II here, now there's going to be the third one. Not AP, but still an upper-level class. So kind of what can you provide the child to kind of exceed at what they're good at and what they want to do? So kind of maybe focus more, have the guidance department focus more on the student specifically, if that makes sense.
Can you elaborate? So here's the nice part of your presentation, seemingly. All of those decision-makers happen to be sitting in this room. So can you give us a little bit more, just from that piece?
You know, I was a STEM kid from the beginning, excelled in math.
Mr. B. Owens, right there. I'm looking at him as you're talking, so.
So kind of for me, I didn't necessarily get the best kind of coaxing to do things that I should definitely have been doing at a younger age. I didn't take any AP classes sophomore year. That's something I think definitely should have changed. Maybe two AP classes in there. I could have taken stats and history, definitely should have taken both of them. And then, looking forward, you know, like they're saying, you know, they have the macroeconomics, microeconomics. A business student that maybe taking high school, or in high school, so someone who would kind of want to do business in the future, like Jing Jing said, may not entirely grasp what the concept of business class is. They don't know what mac, macroeconomics is, they don't know what microeconomics is. So I think kind of expanding the AP network out, it's already, don't worry, it's already very vast and, you know, all that. But I think kind of a more specified to like a certain college major or a certain kind of mode of thought, a certain brand of child, I think. If you kind of market AP classes towards them, kind of focus more from the beginning as a freshman, and kind of see, you know, have the guidance department get to know them, what they're good at, all that stuff. I think if we can focus on the child specifically and kind of branch from there, what kind of curriculum they want AP-wise, I think that'd be very beneficial.
I think if I could like make a similar point off that, if maybe we could recommend courses in tandem to one another? Because that, I'll share like a story of something that kind of made that make a lot of sense for colleges, that in my AP stats class when I was in high school, I knew I was going to be a poly-sized student. I'm a political science student, sorry. That I didn't think statistics would be that big of a deal. First day, I'm showing up and I'm doing like upper-level statistics. Kids in my class are confused. But I took AP Statistics, and I knew exactly what I was doing. So I think if we could recommend, if we recognize that, like Nolan said, we recognize what a student wants to do, and we can kind of build an idea of course load towards gearing them more specifically, maybe, towards what they want to do. I mean, that's a tremendous task to do, I understand that. And I think that has to be a lot on the student doing their own research. But if we can kind of promote that thinking forward towards what you want to do, I think that would really help our students in the long run.
Yeah, I definitely agree that we should kind of like gear people towards certain paths, but also like give more of like, not like a variety, but just like kind of push kids to like explore their options. Because I went in freshman year as a declared math major. I'd done well in high school in math. I took calc, I took stats, I did well. It's like, I might as well just do it. I mean, I seemed pretty good at it. And like the first day, huge meeting, yep, calc III, they're like setting up everything, every... And like the first day, huge meeting, yep, calc three, they're like setting up everything, every department I could go into. And I just realized that like, I don't really think this is for me, I like took econ, I was just on a whim and I really liked it. I mean, I just felt myself like more towards the business side of just, yeah, like jobs and careers. So I just think like also just kind of pushing different APs too, because we didn't really hear about micro or macro. And like I feel like AP calc was a huge push, like lang was a huge push and like bio, so maybe the more like ones that we haven't really talked about are like the unpopular ones, I guess.
Road less traveled.
Yeah.
Thank you guys, I'm watching Mr. B. Owen, I think he may have run his pen out of bank.
Everybody's making notes.
Watching a lot of notes being taken in the back, so, uh, you've, you've officially gotten your teachers to take notes. Congratulations.
Joe, role reversal.
Yeah, so, so we've talked a lot about the academics and the AP programs. And if I remember correctly, all three of you were pretty well-rounded students in sports, music, and theater. Now can you talk a little bit about what that experience was like before you at the high school and how that may have helped you in college as well?
I think all of that forges to the like personal relationship part of the first couple, even the whole first year of college. Is that you go, you're used to, you know, I walked into my first day of senior year of high school, like I owned the place. And I walk into my first day of freshman year of college and I don't know a single person there. I don't know any of their stories, I don't know who I'm gonna hang out with after class. And I think the fact that I was on sports teams and clubs, all of these things in high school, learning how to meet new people, interact with other people. Anything outside the classroom that you can do in a school system is gonna end up paying off. Because interacting with other kids is, you're only in class a couple hours a day. The other twenty hours of the day, you're out with other people. So you need to learn how to interact with other people beyond the classroom.
Yeah, I think the extracurriculars definitely helped, um, I played sports and did music, um, both excellent programs here. Um, and when I went to school, I was thinking, alright, how do I keep with that? How do I kind of stay up to date on all my, you know, activities? So I joined the jazz ensemble second semester, uh, made a lot of good friends, I joined the water polo team second semester, made a lot of good friends. And I think kind of being in an environment that you're comfortable with, be it a sports team or a band, is a huge help in college, you know. When you're kind of in the middle of a sinking ship, not knowing what you're gonna do for the first couple weeks, you know. Um, to have that kinda, uh, fallback safety to, alright, I can go, I can swim laps and be fine, I can go on a run and be fine, I can play my saxophone and be fine. And I think, um, kind of extracurriculars and stuff that you, you start in high school really help develop yourself as a college student.
Yeah, and I also think just because, like, the high school offers so many different varieties of e- extracurriculars that you can do. It really helped me like make friends because I'd been like introduced to all different kinds of people, I'd worked with all different kinds of people, whether it be on sports teams or clubs or jobs or anything like that. So it was great to like kinda go in and like know that I like could relate to them and like I knew how to communicate with them. And I also think like all those clubs and sports helped a lot with time management because you have a lot of time on your hands at school. And being like in high school and I went from like school to like sports to jobs and everything, it really definitely like put me into like a good mindset. Like I need to get this, this, and this done, so I didn't like struggle a lot with time management in college because of that.
Any other member? Well, thank you very, very much for, uh, coming in this evening, it's nice to see that, uh, former graduates are all doing very, very well. And thank you for being honest, as Mr. Harrison said, there's a lot of notes being made in the back of the room, so you may see some changes, so. Have a great summer, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, enjoy.
And good luck.
Nice to see all of you.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you.
Mr. B. Owen is up, Mr. B. Owen is up next?
Yep, Class of two thousand sixteen college admission presentation?
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna go to the banking one?
How about the banking, we'll do the banking next, we carry for that. Alright, yes you come.
Yes, Carrie, she'll address that.
We are going to, um, present to you the, um, highlights of the graduating class of two thousand and sixteen. Thank you for having us tonight and delighted to, to share, um, some information with you, I believe you have it, um, in your packet. I'm gonna let Mr. B. Owen, uh, just talk a little bit about, uh, the information that we have presented to you.
Yes, that was a, that was a great, um, introduction of the class of two thousand fifteen, it was great to see them. Um, so, um, I, I think everybody does have the, the document. Um, so this is, uh, I'm just gonna go into a little bit about the class of two thousand sixteen, it was a very high-performing class. Um, so a pleasure to really talk a lot about them. Um, so, uh, the first, on the first top of the page, we have the breakdown between the different categories, um, that the students, um, went into. Um, and this breakdown is, is made possible by, uh, the work in our, our Navient system. Um, it's a, a college and career online system, it's an online tool that the guidance department, um, highly values. And we, and we use, um, starting in freshman year, all the way up through, uh, the college, um, admission process. Um, so that's how we, that the, the seniors end up doing a, a final survey and that information goes in, and that's how we, um, came up with this. So, um, with the four-year, the four-year colleges, the two-year colleges, seventy-six and twelve percent. Uh, we have a number of students going off to, uh, a few students going off to employment and career education. I will note, um, under the career education, we do have two students who are gonna be continuing in the Project Search Program. Uh, that's part of our vocational program, um, that we have here where the students go and work in, um, uh, the hospital here in Milford. Uh, so it's a, it's a great program, the students get on-the-job training and, and really get into a career path. Um, we have two students going into the military, um, and we have two students doing gap year programs. Um, one of the students is going into the City Year Program. Uh, when I worked in Cambridge and Boston, uh, for a few years, I had the, the opportunity to work with City Year, it's an excellent program. Um, they place, um, college, uh, high school and college students and s- and early adults, um, into, um, mainly urban areas all around the United States. Um, the student that we have this year is going off to Dallas, uh, to do some great work, um, with, uh, high-risk population of kids. Um, City Year goes into public school system and does a lot of work, um, and it's highly valued in, in a lot of these, um, a lot of the cities, including Boston. So, um, and as you can see, uh, now we have a, a, a four-year, um, comparison down at the bottom of the page. Last year was three years, we add on another year, um, and we're really happy to see the increase this year, um, in the students, um, going off to, number one, going off to college. Um, and number two, the students in, going off to four-year schools, it's almost an eight percent, um, increase. Uh, that's really due to, to, um, uh, the talent, you know, in this, in this, um, graduating class. So if we go on to, to page two, we'll just talk a little bit about, um, uh, the amount of applications, um, and the, the diversity of, of colleges and universities that the class of two thousand sixteen did apply to. Um, uh, they were accepted into a hundred and fifty-seven colleges and universities all across the United States. Um, they will go to sixty-nine different colleges and that will be in sixteen different states across the United States. Um, it's a little bit of a different, um, setup that we had from, from last year, we felt like we, we needed to, um, consolidate some information. So that next, uh, the next bullet points, talk about the students attending colleges in Massachusetts, that's where the majority of our students do go to schools. Uh, the students attending colleges in the New England States, and then students attending colleges outside of, um, the New England States. Uh, when we go down to the, to the next table, um, The Barren's Profile of American Colleges is, um, a book that I've used, um, throughout my guidance career. And it's, it's one that's highly valued, um, I know Carrie, um, used it when you were working in, in guidance. Um, so we kinda share the, the same knowledge of, of knowing, um, how they break, uh, colleges down into different tiers. Um, so the most competitive colleges are highly competitive and very competitive, are, are where we really have focused our, our work on and seeing where students have applied, where they've gotten into, um, and that helps us, uh, moving forward as a guidance department and, and as a school, um, to inform us. Um, so we, we, again, we had a, a diverse group of, um, colleges here. Some colleges, um, as, as most of you know, are, are valedictorian, going off to Harvard. Um, that's the first student who's gotten into Har- who's going on to Harvard in many years here in Milford High School. Um, so we're extremely proud of her, um, and she's done an incredible job to, to get there. Uh, but we also have seen a few different schools that, that, um, students haven't gotten into, um, in the, in previous years. Lehigh University, Middlebury University, um, and University of, uh, uh, Middlebury College and University of Rochester. Um, all most competitive schools, um, that our students are going on to, so we're really proud of students because of that. Um, so underneath that, on, on page three, uh, there were a number of colleges, um, that are, that are very specialized schools that, that we wanted to, to highlight, um, where students are going off to. Um, Massachusetts College of Art and D- Art and Design, our art program here is excellent and is really, um, prepared students to go off to in major and in the art majors. Mass College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, Montserrat Car- College of Art, Ringling College of Art and Design, Savannah College of Art and Design School, the Museum of Fine Arts. Um, and Wentworth Institute of Technology, the very specific schools, very specific majors that students go into. Um, and I'll also just add on, we have a, a couple students going on to, uh, military schools, uh, the Massachusetts Maritime Academy and Norwich University. Not students who are going into the military, those are, those are universities, um, that they're going into right after high school. Um, and then the last four pages are specifically the college acceptances. Um, and we wanted to highlight that, wanted everybody to know, um, where our students have gotten into.
Very impressive.
It's been a great class, really great class.
I think the, um, the matriculation report and the, the acceptance report in terms of the, um, most, these schools that are most competitive, highly competitive and, and very competitive, really speaks to what the students were just talking about, which is, um, the class of two thousand and sixteen taking, um, a very rigorous program of studies throughout their four years here at Milford High School. And that positioned them to be competitive in the process, um, because, because it is, um, it is quite competitive to, um, be accepted into these schools because they accept such a low percent of the applicants that, um, that apply. So there's, um, there's a lot of hard work that goes into that on the part of the students right from the ninth grade on in order to get ready for that. And, um, I think hearing from the students, um, the, the importance of that and, and how we can help them, uh, to, to reach their goals and to support them throughout the four years is very important.
This is a great presentation, just a question, uh, if we could explain the, um, the, the, maybe the challenge of tracking the students as they progress through for the completion? Because, so there's the, the, on the one hand, there's the acceptance, and then students may have gotten accepted there but couldn't afford to go and, or in cases that you see where they actually are matriculating. But what about the, the four-year or five-year completion rates? I, uh, my understanding is that if they're, if they're getting scholarships, there, there's a tracking mechanism through that means. But how do we track, is there a way to, to see if they're actually seeing it through? So do our students, you know, you mentioned the four-year data point, is there a way to see, you know, are we seeing that the, you know, what percentage of students are actually finishing in four years or five years? Is that looked at at all? And it's come up before in, in, in conversations with finance committee and school committees past. And I just wasn't sure if, if that's something that, what the challenges are with that.
In the Navient's program, there is an alumni tracker. One of the, one of the challenges is that when the students, um, move on to college, things like their email address, for example, changes. So when I reached out, um, to these students, I will, I contact their homes. Because the emails that I would use with them last year are no longer, they now have their college emails and so forth. So there is an alumni tracker feature that you can purchase, um, with Navient's, it's an add-on. And that's certainly something that we could explore and see what would be involved in order to track our students and reach out to them, um, through that mechanism to, to know how they're doing. And, um.
I'm just thinking, as, as the marketing subcommittee looks at that, it may be an important data point to then say, we have eighty-eight percent of our students going to four-year colleges and we have, you know, seventy-eight percent of them actually finishing in four years and another, you know. It may be an important data point where people, that might get missed somewhere along the way, that, maybe, maybe worth looking at. I, I'm not sure, I, but one of the trade asks.
Kind of do that kind of PK through twenty?
But they do it through, as I understand it, though, the challenge, they do it through student loans. And that's the only way that you could, because if you have students that go in not on a loan process, then, then sure there's.
Yeah, they're looking to do it directly with colleges, university, almost creating like a, like a DES accountability system. And it, and it's, and it's a little ways off, but they're looking to follow kind of a similar path where they're actually tracking students, connecting them back to their high schools, looking at completion percentage and trying to track different trends and patterns.
Beyond the state college system, the private tools.
Correct.
Okay, great, great, that's great.
If I may make a carry, a comment, Carrie, to, to you and your leadership team, very similar to what I said about Bob, you know, buckling down and going back to work. If you look at two thousand and fourteen, you had eighty-six percent of your students going on. Unfortunately, two thousand and fifteen, you had eighty-one point seven, but in two thousand sixteen, you came back and hit it out of the ballpark at eighty-eight percent. Great job, great job.
Thank you, the hard work of the guidance department, the classroom teachers and, and the students, of course, their personal.
Being able, those students being able to take on those challenges. You know, we did see an increase in, in the amount of, um, AP classes that students were taking this past year. Um, and that was not due to the, this, the class of two thousand sixteen, but I think also, um, from nine all, all the way up to twelve.
And we are expanding AP next year, we have, not macro, micro, we need to talk about that. But, um, we do offer those courses though through virtual high school. Students can take AP macro and micro through virtual high school. So if there's an AP that a student wants to take that we don't offer at the high school, we can register them, um, through our virtual high school program. But we are offering AP art history next year, that's a new, a new AP that we're offering.
Um, on the lines of, excuse me, on the lines of AP, um, are you seeing that the enrollment in AP for, so the students have already selected their classes for next year? Um, are you seeing the selection for AP is continuing to increase year over year, so last year's increase? Are you seeing it increase for this coming year already as well?
Well, I know we're in the process of, of creating the schedule and we're gonna be finding that out pretty soon. Um, so we can get some information to you about that in terms of the numbers.
You already have the data on, but what the requests were for AP, but not so much the, what you fulfilled, but what's the request?
Oh, it's a good point.
The requests, uh, the, the requests are in and, and they're pretty significant, quite high. In fact, I was talking with the teacher today because what we're finding is that you have your seniors, they're registering for four or five APs. And, and that's, that's a lot of AP courses for a student to take. So I was actually working with the world language department, um, to offer the Spanish five course as well as the AP Spanish course. Because tho- a number of those students already have four APs, if they take AP Spanish, it's a fifth.
I get that, it's just more of a, uh, my question is, is, so you mentioned that the AP's registration for this class that's graduating was, they took a lot of AP classes. And you've seen some spikes in the number of requests for AP classes. My ask was not, what are we doing with Spanish five or something like, it's the, are you continuing to see more students saying, yeah, raise my hand, I wanna get in an AP class? And that's because I wanna make sure that we're continuing to see that trajectory going forward with, you know, based on what these students just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we'll offer alternatives, I'm comfortable with that, it's the, are, are the kids asking for it or are we trying to shove them into it?
They're asking for it, but they're asking for it while needing to temper the number that they're taking.
I got it, it's just, uh, are they raising their hands, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah.
I know with the AP psychology class, for example, that those, those, um, students who have requested it has increased. And that's increased twofold, um, since I think it was a hundred students a couple years ago, went down to seventy-five this past year. And I think it's over a hundred again for next year, for the requests.
True.
Yeah.
A little bit of a decrease I did see with the eighth grade coming in tonight, for the AP World History, a little bit of a decrease there.
Yeah, and that's a change, you heard Nolan talk about wishing that he had taken, you know, more AP classes in sophomore year. And we started a couple of years ago offering the AP World History class to ninth graders. Um, and it's a pretty rare thing, um, in high schools to be offering an AP class to a ninth grader. There's some strong, um, feelings on both sides, you know, and, and whether or not we should. Um, but we've, we've seen a lot of success over the past few years in those ninth graders taking it.
My, uh, for the marketing subcommittee, my, one of the things that you may wanna think about is, is part of that conversation with marketing from the eighth grade. Having had a student that has recently gone from eighth grade and is now into high school, was one, I think, that was the first year that they offered that. Um, as a parent, I didn't, and, parent and a school community member, I didn't know we did it to eighth, to ninth grader, I didn't know we offered that to ninth graders.
Oh, okay.
So, and I would tell you, as, as, as fairly representative of the population, if I don't know it, there's gotta be at least somebody else that's out there. I'm not saying I don't miss things from time to time, but we're pretty engaged, my, you know, uh, in, in this process. So I, I would say, just from a marketing perspective, the more we can kinda highlight that because it is a rarity, it is a, it is sort of a notch in our belt from a school s- system, the more we can talk about the fact of, hey, we do this that most schools don't, so.
Okay. Any other member? Okay, alright, moving on.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, great job.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. The next, um, part of our presentation, I would like to invite Mr. Mike DeChico. The next part of our presentation, I would like to invite Mr. Mike DeChico to the table. Contained in your packet is quite a bit of documentation about the bank branch proposal that we've been working on for about two years now. This started, yeah, about two years ago. So, and contained in your packet is the response for information document that went through the school council, was, had several meetings with the school council around the bank branch. I talked to Mr. DeChico, I talked to town council, Dr. Tremblay, because we're interested in building a bank branch in the lobby of the cafeteria at the high school in order to create a business in banking and investing pathway for our students. We have a banking and investing course that is taught by Judy Shea and in conjunction with staff from Milford Federal. And we are interested in taking this program to the next level to give the students an experiential process within that learning environment. So I sent out a response for information, and Mr. DeChico responded to that from Milford Fed. And then after that, there were subsequent meetings, and I learned that an RFP needed to be sent out. And so an RFP was developed and created, and that was sent out to all the local banks and credit unions. And again, Milford Federal and Mr. DeChico responded to that. And I, contained in your packet is the response from them and their interest in partnering with us to build a bank branch for our students to have this career and vocational experience and pathway that can lead to a major in business and investment and finance and so forth. So we're here tonight to offer answers to any questions you may have about this. This is in keeping, very similar to what we heard the students talk about a little bit earlier, which is getting specific, giving kids pathways and providing them with opportunities that help them decide the path that they want to take when they leave Milford High School and to best prepare them for that path. So we would like to partner with Milford Federal, with your permission, of course, to begin the construction phase of this banking branch that will be utilized by the banking and investing class as well as the principles of finance class. And Ms. Shea, who will partner with your staff member who is already working with us, Ms. Alman, who comes in several times a year. And she works with the banking and investing students on several topics, banking history, savings accounts, loans, taxes, stocks, bonds, mutual funds, and so forth. So she would continue on with us in this partnership. The bank branch would be open to the Milford Public Schools staff only, and of course, to our students. It would be open, we're considering the hours of eleven to one because that is the lunchtime, when students would be able to have access to their account and make a transaction. It would be staffed by our students, by Ms. Shea, and by the staff from Milford Federal, working in conjunction with each other on the practical application of this experience. So we think it's a very exciting opportunity.
Absolutely, if I could just add in, Mike DeChico, senior vice president of retail banking over at Milford Federal, we're very excited to, you know, hopefully partner with, with Milford High School to do this. Amanda has been doing this since two thousand and fourteen, coming into the classes here. We actually bring in some mortgage reps as well. We bring in someone from our collections department so they can hear the goods and the bads about, you know, your credit history and why it's important. You know, so the branch would be always staffed with a bank manager. So there'd be a bank employee there at all times to make sure we're following compliance rules and security rules and what have you. But the whole idea is it's completely student-run. They're doing, they're doing the teller activity, they're opening an account if they need to. And we would provide all the training for them, whether it be over the summer or what have you. But we'll bring them to Milford Federal, to our branch, train them up. We've actually been hiring out of the high school since, longer than I could, I've been there. Year in, year out, we, we hire for our weekend staff and what have you out of all the local high schools. So we're very familiar with training the younger tellers and such, so.
So hoping that there were discussion, it requires a vote before I look for a motion, any discussion? Joe?
Just want to say, this is a great program. Anytime we can give our students a hands-on experience, it really enhances the educational experience for them. And I, I love this, I think it's a great idea. I think we're going to see a lot of interest in the program, so thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Jen?
You know, the three kids who came earlier, they were so reflective, and they, you could just tell how enriched they were from their time in Milford. And I think back to when I was in high school, and I never had a class in financial literacy, and I know the district has offered some of that, and all the things you just talked about, I don't think I've learned most of those even as an adult. So our kids are so sophisticated in so many different ways, but I'm positive that a lot of them aren't getting the knowledge of how to manage their finances and how to make smart decisions at a young age. So I think this can only add to our students into where they're going to go. I don't know of any other high schools around that have a bank. Is that something that's happening a lot, or do you think that's something unique in Milford right now?
There are several throughout Massachusetts. Midway actually has one, and there's one at Tri County.
Worcester Tech, Worcester Tech has one.
Worcester Tech has one, yeah, Auburn. So there are several models already out there, too.
But it's a great area for Milford to take the lead and do something really positive for our students. So thank you both for that.
Thank you.
The motion, Joe, second from Jim, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I do have to recuse myself, just from a professional perspective, I hope you'll understand.
We understand.
Working in the industry, I have to recuse myself.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Marty, thanks.
Thank you.
Erica, Erica, did you get that Scott had just seen? Okay, thank you, just want to make sure, thank you.
The next item that we have for you is the Milford High School Student Handbook and updates to the handbook that we would like to present to you and seek your approval on.
Sure, so we have about eleven changes here in total. The first page of the document that you have, you can see that the dates have changed, and it's happened on a number of pages, so I'm not going to go through each one of those. So on page one, in our index, the second change, we added in a link to the grading procedure, which has been modified, so make it easier for people to see. Certainly, it'll be, it'll come up with a lot of parents and families, so this should make it a little easier for them. The next change is on page eight. This is a district policy, the visiting Milford Public Schools. This is just an update that we received in September, after the time that we published our last document. So this is just consistent with where every other school is. On page thirteen, this is a change for the high school, to our cell phone protocol that we implemented last year. Based on what's happened this year, we've, we've expanded on some of the language of cell phone use during assessments. We want to make it very clear and more specific about the policy, so everybody is understanding what the expectations are. The next change is page twenty-one, which is basically just a statement that reminds everybody about conduct violations. And we're stating that these may be reported out to colleges and universities as well as become part of a student's permanent record. Again, this was another issue that has come up, and we wanted to just make it clear so everybody has an understanding. On page thirty-six, with our conduct matrix here, we've just expanded on the smoking and tobacco to include e-cigarettes and paraphernalia relating to that. On page forty, we just wanted to be consistent with the district. We just added in the town of Milford as far as paying checks. Page forty-one, we just changed where we do our parking passes. We switched them from upstairs to the house aid downstairs, so that's a minor change. On page forty-seven, we made a few changes here. The first changes are up top where we have reduced the number of assessments, major assessments that may happen in a term. We have said that there's now a minimum of two major assessments. Typically, it is three. In the past, on the block where we had more time, we were saying that there were a minimum of four. So this makes more sense after doing the schedule for a couple of years. I think it's more realistic. And the big change here is, we've put in the grading policy with how every teacher structures their grades as far as each term, mid-year, and final exam. So now it's consistent throughout. And underneath that table, we've just been more specific about seniors. There had been some questions about how do you calculate a senior who qualifies to not have to take a final exam? This just is very specific, so again, there's less questions about whether they have achieved that. On page fifty-four, under absent notification, again, this is more of a clarification, just about, at times, we get students that want to turn things in the last day of the semester, the last day of the year, and this just reminds them, you know, we have a set limit as to when we can do that because it's too difficult at the end of the year. And the last change we have, this is district documentation on physical exams. So again, this is something that's just consistent with all of the other handbooks.
Okay, any others have any questions? Second from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
All right.
unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, nice job.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
And the last item that we have is the school improvement plan. If I may direct your attention to page seven, I'll go through the items in our school improvement plan that we're looking forward to institute for next year. The first is cross-disciplinary lessons among identified courses and disciplines and teachers. And what we're looking to do is essentially pair up some courses that have English and history, for example, having some lessons in the same time period so that English and history teachers can work together collaboratively. We'd like to do that with the art history class, the new AP art history class, and the world history, maybe with world languages. So we're, we want to identify some teachers and some units and some lessons among our educators who would really like to engage in this kind of learning. I think that we heard the students talk a little bit about that, too. And it's come up in the, in the C T L meetings at the high school about trying to get this initiative off the ground. And as with anything new, we'd like to take a couple of teachers who are very invested in trying this and take some units and take some lessons and put the teachers together and put the kids together, and let's see what we can roll out in terms of cross-disciplinary learning. So that's one of our goals. We would also like to advance the early college high school initiative. We are in conversation around that right now. Things are, we're collaborating with Framingham State and Mass Bay and different institutions. It's quite a process, but we will continue that process and to engage them in conversation. We would like to reduce some of our class sizes in the oversubscribed classes, particularly where the students' individual learning needs are high. And we want to make sure we're providing specialized learning opportunities for students and keeping class size at a place where each student can, we can meet the needs of each student in the classroom and support them in their success. We are very fortunate that we were able to have a new math teacher coming to the high school this year, so we will be able to expand the math programming and bring back our MCAS support program that we haven't had for the last few years. The bank branch initiative is one of our goals for next year as well. We have, we created a new report card this year, it's the first rollout of our NIOSC report card. And it was very successful, it's a great report card. We added columns for the mid-year exams, the final exams, and so forth. But one thing that we want to continue to improve on is how we report out our students' progress on achieving the Twenty First Century Learning Expectations that we have set forth. So that, that's something that we will continue with. Right now, it's in, it's in the comments field. We had the teacher on the second and fourth term report card evaluates or rates the student's achievement on the Twenty First Century Learning Expectations. But we want to continue to refine that. Accuplacer training, the accuplacer is an exam that students must take who attend any state university or any of the state college systems in order for placement in English and math at the college level. We're hoping to, we've had two groups of students take the accuplacer testing. One group took it here when the test administrators came here, another group took it at Mass Bay when we brought the students out to Mass Bay to do the testing. What we would like to do is become tester, test administrators ourselves. That way, we can do the testing in-house for our students. We can use that data to steer and drive new courses depending upon the outcomes for the students. So we'll have outcomes where students are college-ready, and they're, they're going to test into Calc III. You heard a lot about Calc III from the students who are here. But there will also be other students that aren't achieving at that level yet. That information can help us with programming at the high school. So if we have a junior, take the math accuplacer here in-house by one of our guidance counselors or one of our teachers. We have a cohort of students that test at an intermediate algebra level. That's going to help us to develop programming for those students so that by the time they graduate from here, they will have passed the accuplacer and thereby not have to take a remedial class at the college level. So that would be, that's a, that's a big goal for next year. Because the, the early college high school initiative is a process, but becoming test administrators for accuplacer is something that I think that we should be able to move forward at the high school. Videos, we have multiple promotional videos of the high school at this point that are all on Milford TV, and I thank them for that, they run them very regularly. What we would like to do, though, is work in conjunction with the video production team and Jeremy Folster and his students in creating some promotional videos of our courses. For example, our AP program. So we would like to interview teachers, interview students. And people are auditory and visual learners, they like to see things and watch it on the TV and maybe see it on YouTube and so forth. So we'd like to create more videos to promote the academic programs. So those are our goals under curriculum and instruction, under teaching all students. We'll continue our data analysis of the PSAT and the MCAS and all of our college board testings. And those results will influence instruction and assessments and help us to steer our curriculum. Our marketing campaign will begin in the fall, we've set three dates already. We had a couple of meetings, many people in this room were there. And so we will continue that marketing campaign to our eighth graders, but we're also going to involve our seventh grade students as well. So that, that's an initiative that we will continue with. Chromebook access for all major academic areas. We are looking forward to receiving four new Chromebook carts, and those will be deployed into the academic arenas to classroom teachers for their students. Student surveys on college career and vocational programs, which I, I had built this into the school improvement plan prior to, of course, not knowing that Jing Jing and Nolan and David would be talking a little bit about that. But I do think it's important that we survey the kids and find out what it is that they would like to see for new pathways, new career programs and vocational opportunities. I talk informally with students all the time, and we've talked a lot about things in facilities management, health sciences. Students have some very definite ideas of the pathways that they're interested in. So I tend to survey them, and that will help us to have a vision for more programs in the direction that we're going to head in for the students. Student-led presentations on their junior and senior projects. You may have seen Josh Miaris, he had... He had a great article in the Milford Daily News on his senior project. He has gone on to, he's graduated, he's going to school to be an architect. And he knew early on he wanted to be an architect. And so he set out with his guidance counselor on a four-year plan to help him reach his goals. And part of his four-year plan was a senior project with Rich Johnson in the engineering classroom. And he built a city. So he built this wonderful city, and it was just spectacular. He presented it in the CAF lobby to the student body during lunch one day. And the Milford Daily News came, and they did a wonderful article on it. And it's so impressive. We're keeping the city to show to our eighth graders and seventh graders through the marketing campaign next year. And he made all the windows and doors with the 3D printer. And the city lit up, the lighting, it was spectacular. So we would like to do more with presenting these senior projects and junior projects, the great work that the students are doing. And in our next area for our school improvement plan, under family and community engagement, we'll continue our parent-to-parent presentation that we started this year and our student-to-student college planning events. College admission representatives will present, we will invite parents of the eighth-grade students to come. We'll have a special night for them where they can start talking about the future for their students and what it is to lay out a four-year high school plan in preparation for college admission. We will continue to increase the publicity of the schools. This year, we had a student rep at every school committee meeting who updated the committee on what was going on in the high school and some of the highlights of our, every two weeks. And I thought that was very positive, so I thank you for giving us that opportunity.
Karen, just real quickly, if I may, just, with regards to helping the parents lay out the four-year educational planning and like that. Are we starting that with the, so I guess it's just understanding the timing on it because this kind of goes back to what we were talking about as far as the course selection. I love the fact that we have these, the three returning alumni. I think that's fantastic. And they talked about the APs and they talk about all this stuff. That's great. They started selecting classes in March, February, March, February, March is when we're doing that. Is there a way to just start to share some of this information? The eighth graders select their freshman year courses when? When do they start selecting those? Are we doing, are we helping parents with helping their students to map out their four years starting with their freshman year in going and talking to the eighth-grade parents before they choose their course selection? So that they can help with that process? Because what I'm, what I want to make sure we're doing is we're getting out in front of it. And it's not, great, and when you're a freshman, we're going to help you map out that, well, that's great, but you missed a year.
Right, that's, right.
So it's not a four-year plan now, and now it's a three-year plan.
So collaborating with Nancy Angelini now and coming up with some programming?
And talking to those eighth-grade parents of the, hey, we want to help you map out your children's four-year high school career because it's really not a four-year career when we talk to one of their freshmen because they've already selected their classes. They're already in them, they're already ingrained by the time we get to them, and that's if you get to them in September.
Right, right. So that is absolutely something we can do and get ahead of that before the course selection process. Because as you know, with the course selection process, the teachers make electronic recommendations. And then the students select electives. And then a document is sent home to the parent to sign off and approve. But getting ahead of that process.
And I think it's just, it can be a very overwhelming process for parents because you get this whole list of classes, and it's that, well, what do you think you'd like to do? And you're talking to a fourteen-year-old. And they don't really know either. And then, well, what have you talked to your guidance counselor about? Well, I don't know, they said the teachers recommended this. And I think that if we're, I think it's a great idea. I think we just, we've got to make sure that the timing aligns with when the parents are actually going through and making the selection process so that we can help them with that process. We're going to give them a blueprint. Don't do it after the building's built.
Right, so I think a middle school, high school partnership in that, then?
Would be great.
Okay, great, thank you. And we'll continue the academic scope and sequence for parents. And that was one thing, actually, the eighth-grade parents were invited to our academic scope and sequence this year and last year. And they, so that's the first introduction. And that occurs in January every year. So a second leg of that could be a collaboration with the middle school. And the seniors, we'll continue with the seniors' last week of school and senior week planning because, as was mentioned earlier, this year was a very successful year-end for the seniors. They had a, as I think most people know, they had a prom promenade. They took buses to the prom. They had a fantastic field day. And all of the senior week events are terrific as graduation. So we will be continuing the process of senior contracts, having parents come in for meetings and having those conversations. And lastly, under professional school culture, we will continue the college of knowledge, our department presentations for faculty to increase awareness and understanding of what each other does because at the high school, everyone's departmentalized. And so you kind of live with your department, and we don't have as much cross-disciplinary as you find in other schools. So we will continue that. Our faculty discussions on teaching and learning in the 21st century. Through our document library in X2, we have a lot of information and articles for our faculty. And now that we've completed our NIESC, is that we will be able to reorganize our professional learning communities. And those will be groups of teachers that develop recommendations around advanced placement program, career pathways, student handbook, principal advisory, and our NIESC follow-up. Because NIESC will be coming forth with recommendations for us. I don't have that report yet, but when I receive that, I'll certainly be talking with you about that. And we'll have a committee of teachers looking at that as well. And so that is the Milford High School school improvement plan.
Now I take a motion to accept. Joe, second by John, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the superintendent's annual reappointment to the By County Collaborative Board of Directors. I refer that to Dr. Trumbull.
Yes, members of the committee, this is an annual vote that takes place because the By County Collaborative has to have a board representative of superintendents. I'm going to ask to the board to take a vote to name Dr. Kevin McIntyre as the By County Collaborative Board of Directors member to serve and represent. Spico, replacing me. Congratulations.
Any discussion? Second, Jim, all in favor? Unanimous, even with a uh.
Joe, you're really enjoying that one.
Next agenda item, reporter, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
I'm DePina Bells.
Thank you. This evening, I have eight warrants for the committee's approval. The first warrant is in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
Motion from John, second by Joe, all in favor? Unanimous.
The second warrant is in the amount of two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Motion from Joe, second by Scott, all in favor? Unanimous.
The third warrant is in the amount of six thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion from Jen, second from Scott, all in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Motion from Joe, second by John, all in favor? Unanimous.
The next warrant is in the amount of one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion from Jim, second by Jen, all in favor? Unanimous.
The next warrant is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion by Joe, second by Scott, all in favor?
Bless you.
Bless you, bless you.
The next warrant's in the amount of seven hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim, all in favor?
And the last warrant's in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Motion by Jen, second by Joe, all in favor? Unanimous.
And the committee has an update for the 2016 budget. There are, the remaining funds that the committee does see on the financial statement for June will go to the unencumbered expenses in employees' contracts that we have to meet our obligations. As well as within the technology budget, Carrie spoke to a little bit. But our needs have been met for our networking infrastructure goals for this year. And we were able to acquire four Chromebook carts at the high school and four Chromebook carts at the Stacy School within our end-of-year funds. In addition, the committee also has a personnel update for the committee's advisement only. No vote is required. I am bringing forward a 2017 because we have approved and voted on our '17 budget. As it stands existing, the school administration, including Judy Dagnes, the director of nursing, is requesting that we move and accept a budget transfer request from our 2017 approved budget from a teaching position that was a late retirement notification and move that salary line over to a salary line within the nursing salary request. That transfer request is in the amount of fifty-five thousand from teaching salaries to the nursing salary line. And the statement on behalf of school administration is also in your packet as to the explanation of the need.
And that will require, yeah, that's correct?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on that?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
If I may. So the position that is being vacated by the retiring teacher, is it that there's not a need to backfill that teaching position?
The schedule at the Woodland School will be able to incorporate the change within the day.
Okay, with no impact to student enrollment and student class sizes?
Correct.
Okay. That was my two questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion from Joe, second from Scott, all in favor? Unanimous.
And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, next agenda item is subcommittee updates. I'll speak for policy. We're meeting Monday night, correct, Dr. McIntyre?
That's correct.
Okay. Wellness, we are done for the year, correct, Mrs. Dagnes? Okay. Middle School East.
Yeah, we had a, we had a meeting scheduled, we had a meeting actually a little over a week ago. Scott had, was unfortunately unable to attend due to a commitment that arose unexpectedly. But I did meet with Carrie and Kevin. And what we talked about was the, in the space, the needs for more space at the high school. It was originally my intent to have Carrie speak to that tonight. Given the fact that we're adding some meetings over the summer months, I think that can wait and, you know, hopefully Scott and I can then schedule a subcommittee meeting.
Sure.
Go through it further and possibly even make it an agenda item for the night for the, you know, one of the, one of the next couple of upcoming meetings.
Okay, absolutely. I will handle that for you. Woodland School Building Committee?
We met last night. Everything's still going very smoothly and well. They're still looking at a July 26 substantial completion. I heard the word punch list mentioned a number of times, which is a really good sign. That means a lot of work is completed and finishing touches are being put on things. Gym floor is down, so it sounds like the gym is in good shape. The elevator is just about there in terms of being ready to be inspected. There's some seating that will be done starting in July. And a subcommittee has been formed to start thinking about planning a dedication for the new Woodland building.
Oh, great, great, great.
Anything beyond that, I would defer to Craig Consigli.
You ought to wake him up. Great, technology?
We have none of that.
Okay, thank you. Climate, culture, and morale?
So we've had a couple of meetings. We've had one meeting with Nancy, Judy, sorry, which we just, we just covered. And then we had another meeting with the entire committee where we kind of recapped what's been accomplished throughout the year, the focus on improving communication, discipline, as well as facilities. And we covered some of the progress that was made there. And then we talked a little bit about what we want to prioritize for next year. And I think we're going to drill down a little bit deeper into discipline and really focus more on the root causes. And focus more on things like PIBS and some behavioral, social, emotional things that Kevin's working on. And just focus on that for next year, and we can convene in the fall.
Great. Budget Subcommittee?
We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago. The focus of that meeting was really on the foundation budget commission's recommendations and how those, how that proposal could benefit the Milford School District. And we're putting some numbers around that as well that we can come back and share with the committee and obviously share with our legislators as well.
Now, was that the meeting we went to in Newton, Joe?
The foundation meeting? It was.
Yeah, okay. Great, Marketing and Communications?
So a lot of progress on the marketing and communications side. We've had several meetings. We've had a lot of discussion around that. And as you saw in the, in the school improvement plan, it's obviously focused at each of the individual schools. Carrie talked about it today. Nancy talked about the last time she was here. We're having a lot of conversations with Peter as well. And I think we may have talked about this at the last meeting. The focus over the summer is really on three different roundtables that we're going to be hosting. One roundtable is on athletics and bringing the youth organizations in a room together with the high school coaches and in talking through how we can improve that relationship and really build that pipeline from the youth level up to the high school. The second area of focus is working with local realtors to find out what it is that they're hearing from prospective buyers and also provide them with some facts around the school district. Provide them with some numbers that they can share with prospective buyers. So we're working on putting together sort of a one-page document for them. And that can also be used as a marketing tool as well. And then the third area of focus, which Carrie touched on as well, is really working with the traditional media, with Milford TV, with Milford Daily News, WMRC, the Town Prior, and finding ways that we can leverage them a little bit more to get our story out there and really promote all the great things that are happening across the district. So it's going to be busy summer.
Did you have the opportunity, one of the things that we talked about, for the members that don't know that, is that because of the way that they went down into the eighth grade from the high school, then they brought the eighth grade up to the high school, that whole program, they increased their enrollment from eighth grade into the high school, Dr. McIntyre, by almost a hundred?
It's a little less than that, but significant. Significant increase. I don't know the exact number, but we've seen a significant jump in interest in the high school from our eighth grade, which is fantastic, which is the target of these types of programs.
And you said most of it came from the children that the eighth graders coming into the high school who didn't realize what was offered at the high school level?
Absolutely, and I think it's, you know, it's a big part of this program. It's really marketing to our own customers and really getting kind of a clear messaging out around, I think, what a tremendous offerings at the high school level that really sets students up for success in the future.
Right, right. That's good. Okay, school liaison, anybody have an opportunity to get into their schools?
Just a quick thing.
Yes.
On behalf of liaison for Middle School East, as we are winding down our final days there, we should have all, all members should have received an invitation to the final ceremony for eighth grade. It'll be next week, the final day of school, as it has been for multiple generations at this point. This will be the last one in that building for the eighth grade. So certainly, hopefully, all can attend.
Okay, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to see in the future agendas on what we spoke about for the summer meetings? Anybody have any old business? There is no executive session tonight. So I'll take a motion for adjournment from Scott, second from Jimmy, all in favor? Good night. Hope everybody has a happy and safe summer.